Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. My name is Don Swiker. I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Science.
Morning.
To my right, Nen Flago. Bjorn from the IT's office. Lisa from the Auditor's office. We have Luanne in the back and Brittany from the press. And first up, we have visitors and citizens. Is there anybody here that would like to address the the board today? Melissa, I see you're on.
Hi, I'm just, I'm just a concerned citizen and county resident. Just wanted to say hi. Thank you.
You betcha. Well, being the first person here today is Ruth. We're gonna go ahead and let Ruth go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What's up, everybody?
How's the VA office doing today?
Doing well, doing well. So we, um, just some of our office statistics for last month, we had fifty-nine in-person visits from veterans and family members. Took a hundred and eight phone calls. Um, we did seven intent files, so people who are thinking about filing a claim, uh, eight disability claims, uh, one supplemental, which is an appeal. Um, two higher level reviews, which are also appeals, um, one DIC claim, four healthcare forms, a records request form, and we had twenty-four decisions made in August. And we currently have seventy-two, well, as of last month, we had seventy-two open claims, um, and our office was responsible for filing seventy-five percent of those claims. So we have four hundred and twenty-four veterans and eligible family members, uh, receiving eight hundred seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars in August. So that's up a little bit, I think, from, um, July. Um, part of the reason I'm late in doing my, um, my departmental update is because we had the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs training that was held just, uh, last week, twenty-first through twenty-third. Um, obviously lots of great presenters, lots of great new information. Um, networking is huge for these trainings. We're kind of the only, I don't wanna say the only point of contact, but we're one of the main point of contact for our veterans, even our military, you know, active military members in the community. So, um, it's nice that we can network and meet with people and, um, and learn about new resources. Um, I'm hoping to promote some of those resources through our Facebook page, our newspaper articles, and our face-to-face contact with our veterans. Um. So we also had some, uh, Commandant Jacobus, he is the, I guess, head of the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs, so he was there during our training. Um, currently, the state of Iowa is ranked, uh, forty-four out of fifty-three for our national ranking for our veterans, um, benefits.
Fifty-three?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, so obviously that is big room for improvement, right? Um, one of the things, though, that someone mentioned is we're one of the, we're one of the few states that doesn't have a military base. So that may affect some of our, our benefits as well. You know, we don't have a military base that we're pulling, you know, people from when they get out, so. Um, but that's a big push, too, with our National Guard. When they start coming back, we need to be, you know, meeting them and, and be more proactive in how we, uh, we interact with our veterans. Um. Our county, though, out of the ninety-nine counties, is ranked nineteen. So that's, I'm, I'm pretty happy with that. Obviously, room for improvement. We would love to improve, but as far as, you know, out of, out of ninety-nine counties, that's, um, I think that's pretty good. Um, going forward, I'm working on identifying ways to improve our services to our veterans, so I wanna have more outreach activities. The newspaper articles have been huge. I can't tell you how many people I've had come in my office and saying, hey, you read your article, um, can you tell us more about this? Or we didn't know you were here, or, you know, my son or daughter is just getting out of the military, can they come in and talk to you? And that's huge. Uh, so I can't thank the newspapers enough for offering us that opportunity. And also, I wanna work on being more proactive instead of reactive. So when our veterans get a rating decision and we see it, I wanna be calling them and saying, hey, what can we do? What are you now eligible for? How can we help you? Are you enrolled in VA Healthcare? You know, things that maybe they just got a rating decision and they're like, wow, you know, or, oh, no one I wanted. So being more proactive, um, I think is, is a good thing. As far as community outreach, um, the newspaper article last month was on the HISA grant, so, um, a home improvement, structural alterations grant that's available through VA healthcare side of things, not through benefits management. Um, and then November seventeenth, uh, we will be hosting Deborah Muller from the Iowa City Healthcare System. Um, she's a suicide prevention coordinator, so she will be having a presentation at two P M., um, in the Makopata Library Community Room. So we're open to all veterans and family members, the public. So our goal is to help create a community that supports the need of our veterans and let them know, you know, you're not alone. Here are services you can connect to. Um, and how we can kind of assist them, you know, 'cause not every veteran has PTSD, but, um, there are also other mental health issues that, you know, everybody faces, anxiety, depression, those kind of things. And so we wanna, wanna let them know that services are available for them.
For other things besides just?
Yeah, yeah, not, yeah, there's, there's other, there's other things, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, that veterans deal with and the general public deals with, and she's, you know, she's a suicide prevention coordinator, but she has a lot of good information and a lot of good connections. Yeah, so we're excited about that. Yeah, so that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions.
Um, just maybe another avenue to look at, and I don't know if every community will do it, or if any of them would, would be like, is there something we could put in, like, mailers that go out with utility bills?
Yeah, I've, we have looked slightly into that. I haven't delved into it entirely. That has been brought up a couple of times and, and I've, I've looked into the, the prospects of it, and so we're.
I mean, obviously, every, every household that gets a bill has to get the, the mailer.
Yeah.
May not have veterans in it, but.
Right, right. We might be able to offer a little, you know, even a small, you know, hey, this is just where we are. Come, come see us if you need anything, or even if you don't think you need anything, it's still sometimes good to come in and have the conversation. It's amazing in those face-to-face conversations, what comes up? And then you're like, wait a minute, why? So maybe no thing, we can help you with that, like.
So what Together We Build, they got a lot more upticks on their, their website and different things, just by, they have somebody that does digital marketing.
Okay.
And so when you log in, you get these kinda, sometimes called spam ads, or, you know, um, it's kinda, it tags it depending what you look, it pulls up and it starts showing that that's available. And it really helped increase our traffic on the website. So maybe if we thought of something like that, so when people are in there looking, anything military, it kinda pulls for this area and says, hey,
Sure.
um, this is a resource.
Yeah.
So as they're scrolling social media, which seems to be the
Right.
major outlet, you know,
Yeah.
expenditure of time.
Yeah.
Um, that would be a good way to just kinda get that ad to pop up and say, hey, come talk to us.
Yeah, that is a good idea. And we are getting actually new views on our Facebook page. Um, every, you know, I check it every once in a while. It's like, oh, you have three new views today. You have four new. So those are good things. I think people are starting to realize that we have a Facebook page, that we're posting information on it. Um, so I think that's, that's good, too. Yeah, but if we could get some kind of, hey, check, you know, come see us. That would be amazing. Yeah, that would be great. I would love that.
But I think, I hear nothing but good things from your office, so I just say, keep it up and good job.
Thank you so much. Have an excellent rest of your day.
Thank you. Next up, we have Becky Chapin from Human Resource. Good morning.
Did you guys see the agenda this office morning?
Yeah.
Um, so Tricia Kilburg, who's been employed with us for just over a year, over at DePernos Annex, she's a confidential secretary of both Veterans Department and the Mental Health Department, has, um, submitted her notice of resignation. She will be resigning effective November seventh. Um, and Linay, Ruth and I will talk about the position a little bit before considering proceeding with the position. Um, but for today, I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation from Tricia Kilburg, confidential secretary, effective November seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve, accept the letter of resignation from Tricia Kilburg and express our, our appreciation for her time served. Um, effective November seventh, twenty twenty-five for the Con- confidential secretary position she holds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then after serving as interim zoning administrator for the last three months, Becca Fleuhop is ready to assume the permanent role. We kind of anticipated this with the retiring of Rory Rowley. Um, uh, her and I had a very nice conversation last week about how she has progressed within the department, and we feel like she's ready to make the permanent transition. I would ask for a motion to approve Becca Fleuhop as zoning administrator at an annual salary of seventy-four thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, effective October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, including authorizing benefits as negotiated. I'll make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to, uh, uh, approve Becca Fleuhop as a zoning administrator with an annual salary of seventy-four thousand, six eighty-eight, thirty-two, effective October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and including authorization, authorizing benefits as negotiated. Does she become a full-time physician then?
It is, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and, and again, uh, I've heard nothing but good things from the office and from, uh, community people about the job that she is doing, and she kind of worked right into it and, and spends a lot of time at it, so.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it's nice that we're rewriting her zoning, and so it's a little more clearer for everybody. It's online, it's, uh, it's, it's very effective, I think, for her. Kudos, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries. Welcome aboard permanently.
So, um, last week, the Sheriff's Department bargaining unit presented their initial proposal. This week, we are providing the unit our initial proposal. I have provided this to the union, um, labor specialist. I do see a couple of them, uh, unit members, um, have zoomed in. I don't know if you have any questions? Um, or if anybody wants to speak.
No, thanks, Becky.
Okay, perfect. Um, I will give a physical copy of this to Joel, um, since he's here in the building, and then we look forward to seeing you guys at the bargaining table.
We did.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We look forward to, Becky, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's a couple other people. Are those the? Who else are, who else is online? Could you identify yourself, who's?
So that's John Thomas.
Okay.
And then Squad may have been.
It's just me, sir.
Okay. Yeah, Jim. Thank you very much, Becky.
I have, sir.
All right, next up, we have Jeannie Collins-Hare for the Weed Commissioner. Departmental update.
Good morning. Morning.
How you doing?
Um, so as far as complaints, there was three this year, two mail, uh, two, uh, letters mailed out and they took care of them, the problem immediately, and one was a roadside complaint, and I dealt with that, treated the problem, so. Other than that, it was.
That's pretty minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
We've been doing a lot of, the engineers' offices have been doing a lot of brush clearing. Everything, communication, maps, everything, getting to you okay? Too much work, not enough work? You need support? What's going on?
Got it taken care of this, this year. Uh, sounds like they're doing a lot more for next year.
They got a lot of new toys.
I don't know how it'll play out time-wise.
Okay.
Do what I can do, I guess.
Okay. Well, keep us informed. We'll talk to Nate and we'll do the best we can to.
Sometimes it's a weather game. I, I know we get so many days of twenty or thirty mile an hour winds that just don't work.
That don't work.
Yeah, you don't wanna get.
Depends on which way it's blowing.
Yeah.
Them is roses, but, you know, you know, at least with the program, with more clearing and, and brush cutting, we'd like to keep it, keep the spraying up even, you know, again, we can coordinate if we need, um, to contract some out or something maybe like that, too, that we can
Right.
figure out a budget time, you know, we talk about it and see how much.
I just want, uh, 'cause I, they just got the new trackhoe with the grinder on it. They got the, the bobcat with the grinder on it. So that means they're gonna go a lot farther, a lot faster, and I just wanna make sure that, A, they're getting you the information and the maps where they are, so you know where to go in the next year, and B, do you have the resources you need to, to keep up, so to speak?
I The amount they did this year, it didn't seem to be a problem, but a lot of increase, it probably will be overwhelming. I, I guess I don't know to what magnitude they're gonna cut this.
Yeah, and, and they have.
They seem to have fun in that thing, so. So I just want you to kinda look in the future a little bit.
Okay.
And kinda see, so we can tackle it before it becomes a major issue, and, and so just if you see it getting a little overwhelmed, just let us know if there's different equipment or whatever, or if you need a helper during the summer, you know, we can see what we can do.
Okay.
I guess James, so he can kind of fill in. Jeannie, when she needs to be.
Yeah, we're working on the maps for what has been done so far this year already.
Okay.
It depends on when snow flies, too. Hopefully that holds off, obviously, 'cause the more it's sold up, the more we can do, uh, which doesn't make your task any easier, I guess.
All right.
Thank you, Jeannie. We appreciate it.
Well, we gotta do the Weed Commissioners Certification Form. Any questions on it?
No.
Um, I, I guess, yeah, is there any other species that you see or coming or talked about, or?
Um, I see here and there, is it a real major problem right now? I don't see it as that, no. Um, there are a few weeds I'm starting to see. Hope weed is one, um, hop weed would be one.
I know a couple of years ago, we talked about this wild cucumber that
Yeah.
be bathing these cornfields and like, you can't see it until you get there, and then it eats your combine up and sucks it in.
You know that frost we got, hopefully it took care of it, 'cause it seems to be rather fragile or whatever, and.
It should have. I know it looks at the equipment, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We take a motion to approve the twenty-six-week commissioner certification form.
So moved.
I'll secondize the chair signature.
Oh, yeah.
I'll second.
Whatever needs to be done.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the twenty-six-week commissioner certification form, unauthorized chair signature. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries. Anything else?
You need a motion to approve and authorize the chair signature in the twenty-twenty-five Weed Commissioners Report.
Oh, I'm in, too.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve action, or, uh, to approve the twenty-five-week commissioners' report as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries as well. You're good to go. Any questions for us? Have a great day.
Appreciate it, Danny, and hopefully we're gaining ground on some of our brush areas and, you know, so visibility and stuff has, has been concerning, of course, of some of our evidence.
Some of there, there's some regrowth and probably some of those areas should be gone over a second year. It's just the time to do it.
Yeah.
With, yeah, continually.
Well, you just posted.
Alright, thank you.
Much.
Thank you.
Next up, Jaden Shackle from the Engineers Office. Good morning.
Good morning. First thing on our agenda is a field permit for, uh, field entrance permit for Jim Eric on Forty-Fifth Avenue, Brandon Township, Section sixteen. It meets all the site distance, your Kaiser Culver, which is all noted on the permit, so, uh, requirement recommends approval.
My motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve the entrance field permit, uh, for Jim Eric on Forty-Fifth Avenue, Brandon Township, Section sixteen, as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Uh, next is a revision to the fiscal year twenty-six, uh, five-year program, so, um, as I'm working through initial drafts for fiscal year twenty-seven budget season, uh, we obviously always do daily bridges, um, and from that, two bridges are over the bid threshold, which means they have to be publicly bid to be in compliance with Iowa code. So in order to, my plan would be to bid them this winter, so they can be constructed next summer. Well, this winter, we're still in fiscal year twenty-six, so the way the DOT does it is they have to be fiscal year twenty-six projects, even though they'll be expensed in twenty-seven. Uh, it goes by when they're letting, whatever, than our construction projects. It goes by the letting. So this revision is just to move two bridge projects up to fiscal year, this current fiscal year twenty-six, uh. The one actually was planned for fiscal year twenty-thirty, but it had, we had our, all of our bridge inspections completed this spring and summer, and the substructure rating on the one bridge on Seventeenth Street, uh, has deteriorated and, um, as, as far as substructure rating, it's, I think, one of the worst. It's our worst in the county, so, uh, I think it makes sense to move that one up, and we'll take care of the trickle effect during actual five-year program time, as far as rearranging the priorities for it.
Is that the one by five thirty-fifth?
It's on Seventeenth Street, it's, uh.
I was gonna tell you that before we started. Um, so, did this have a waiting up and on a Jaden, or was it, had it, was it flagged before, I imagine, or something?
Yeah.
I know we went through this before, and all of a sudden, it really wasn't flagged, but then I saw it fell in.
So, and it was one that we originally want, are thinking of doing, I mean, fix for, like fixing some of the piling, but after talking with Todd on it, it seems that the fix is a little more in-depth than maybe what I initially had assumed, and it's like, gosh, just the rest of the bridge isn't pretty either. I just feel like a fix is just putting a little Band-Aid on it. I think it makes sense to replace it, and it's a tired eat.
This is gonna be the twenty-seven-foot cement slab bridge when it's done, man, or?
Yes, yeah.
So when you say twenty-six, it has to be completed in twenty-six?
Oh, just, it's just 'cause it's let.
Let and it's letting.
'Cause, uh, so every year, we have to submit our annual report to the DOT for our department, and, uh, we've been getting slapped on the hand when we're over the.
The one I'm looking at by five thirty-fifth has got the Heckman.
See, here's.
Properties on north and south.
Yes, it'd be that one.
Okay.
You're talking right there.
Uh.
No, up to the right, to the, right there.
Right there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. That does construct pretty good.
Yeah, it's it's just deteriorated as such where the other one, I mean.
So you said you let it this winter, but as considered a twenty-six project.
So it'll get moved into fiscal year twenty-six, 'cause it'll be let this winter, which we're still fiscal year twenty-six, but it won't be expensed or built until fiscal year twenty-seven, till after July, or if it does get built before July.
Then it doesn't.
We just make our proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so it'll still come out of fiscal year twenty-seven's budget, but it just needs to get moved up, so we can let it this winter. Otherwise, we'd have to wait till after July to let it, and then at that point, it probably won't get built till the following year.
So the bids come, we bid it already? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Look, we have to do. Said it come over the, over the projected.
So I have to do a cost estimate
Yeah.
on it, and based on that cost estimate, I mean, it's well over the bid threshold and, uh, that, my hand has gotten slapped from the DOT for our annual report from bridges from last year that, uh, I mean, it by, if we don't publicly bid it, we're in violation of that code.
Okay, so this bid threshold,
Mm-hmm.
means everything's been changed in so much in the last five years. Of inflation, if you will, or whatever it may be. Does that change periodically?
The DOT updates it about once every two years, so for last year and this current calendar year we're in, it is set at a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Which you don't get much.
No. No, you don't get, check squad.
Are they keeping up?
They actually, so two years ago was actually a hundred and twenty thousand, so they actually decreased it these last.
Nice.
So.
It's nice. They're getting a better rate than we are, though.
I don't know what they all use to determine that, but.
I mean, I don't know how much it makes a difference to you, but as far as getting projects completed or done quicker with local contractors, I mean, we're fortunate to have locals, you know, but, yeah.
Yeah, it still get done in the same timeframe, it's just which, doing this way. What's that?
It, to me, it just means a lot more bureaucracy. Lot more steps, humps to jump through, or hoops to jump through, all that kind of stuff.
That part is, other than now, instead of, in the past, we just have to do, we'd have to do lettings for our steel, lettings for our lumber, and then we'd have to send out quotes to the bridge contractors to actually install said materials on bridge. We're doing it this way. It's no different than any of our other projects. Here's the plans for the bridge, just build us the bridge. We don't have to have three separate proposals go out.
All right. Well, so you're looking for a?
Make a motion to up, update the five-year road plan fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Are, are we do, advancing both these bridge shots as accomplished for the twenty-six year at one, or no, we're doing?
It'd be for both, to move up to this year, so we can let them both.
Resolution for advancing to.
Yeah. So then there's a resolution, or, for this.
So is that a motion, Nen?
Okay, so I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve a resolution.
Here. Eleven fifty-one dash ten, dash twenty-eight, dash twenty twenty-five.
Yep. Prove resolution eleven fifty-one dash ten, dash twenty-eight, dash twenty twenty-five, admitting secondary rail construction program, advancing the, uh, Seventeenth Street and Four Fifty-Eighth Avenue bridges to the current FY twenty-six fiscal year. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries.
Um, last, in this week, it was notified by the City of Miles that they had a storm sewer collapse, or storms who are collapsing underneath uh, their ferry road, or also known as Five Hundred Avenue in the county portion, but it's within city limits, so ferry road. Uh, went out there and looked at it, and it is a existing twenty-four-inch, uh, storm sewer pipe that runs underneath ferry road, and it is collapsing. Um, and
Metal?
Both clay.
Mm-hmm. How much needs replaced?
It'd be about forty-five, the entire crossing
Yeah.
from inlet to inlet, and they, uh, I was talking to Paul Dugies, which I believe he's the, he's the Public Works Director, Fire Chief down in Miles, uh, both, both. Thank you.
Do that.
And he stated to me that, you know, this, the City of Miles doesn't really have the funding available to cover it right now. I didn't know if the county would be willing to provide any assistance, and I said, well, I'd want to have to bring it to you, three, the, for that decision, uh, but I have a cost estimate for it. It's roughly above, it's supposed to be office, every year, yeah, about thirty thousand dollars, and I include some contingency. Uh, just given the nature that it's a, I mean, very small project, I mean, it's, you're gonna pay a little bit more.
What kind of money are they retaining?
So they get, are, are we transferred to them the FM extension money? So they're one of the communities in our county that when we get money for, with they for FM extension, we, there's a twenty-eighty agreement that they keep, or we give them their, uh,
A lot of them.
Yeah.
You know, so, which thirty thousand is more than what they get in a year, but I guess to help them out, I think it makes sense to give them assistance through this, where I guess we line up the contractor, get the work completed, and I guess we pay for it, but in turn, we keep their FM extension money until we have been reimbursed at full.
So a couple things, you know.
If, I'm sorry. If they got their thirty thousand for the year, or what, I don't know.
I don't.
Not thirty thousand, sorry.
If.
What, do they have some in the bank that they can contribute? Are we floating the full thirty?
That I'm not sure. And I would guess anything we decide, I would create up, or draft up in an actual agreement where it'd be assigned by you three and also the City of Miles.
The only other question I got is, okay, we're gonna replace this clay pipe. What's it connecting to? More clay?
It could be. It's outside of the road, though. It goes into their crane space.
Open.
Yeah, so.
But to me, is this gonna be one of those gifts that keeps on giving, is if the clay pipe that they want replaced is collapsing and it connects to clay, which makes sense, are we gonna, is it?
Basically, just.
You can't just go, well, there's the pipe, okay, but everything else is.
It's not just culvert with an open end and an open end.
Correct. There's more pipe as it goes.
So my fear is, you get in there and this is collapsed, then it, what's the stopping point?
It could progress, it, uh, the only thing that there, this road here, or the crossing underneath the road, I mean, that road sees seven, or from the DOT maps, like seventeen hundred cars a day, and it's pretty, there is substantial traffic, I guess, so if somewhere to collapse and the road caves in and they aren't able to fix it, I feel like we're ultimately probably gonna get pushed.
I don't, I don't know that that's maybe, I don't wanna speak for Don, but what he's saying is, okay.
I don't wanna have to go.
We understand that it's just this, but now as you're going and you wanna connect to where that clay.
And you go to connect to the other end of the pipe.
Keeps breaking down.
It's collapsing.
I got you, so.
How far of our investment do we want it?
So it'll only be from inlet to inlet, so it, it's a, from inlet to inlet, you know, at the, you could have a square inlet with a pipe coming in here and leaving here. We would just be.
So the inlet is concrete.
Correct.
But that's what I was asking, 'cause if, if it was just contiguous clay pipe,
Oh, no.
and this is collapsing, I don't wanna have to start digging up.
No, me neither. No, that's, it's not the case.
That's.
From inlet to inlet, so from concrete structure to concrete structure.
How big's the pipe?
Twenty-four inch.
Well, you can sleeve it, or?
It's, no. It's, I mean, it's collapsed. And it would be, my, on my estimates, to use, uh, reinforced concrete pipe, which is standard underneath, 'cause it's not that deep either, so you'd wanna reinforce, so RCP pipe.
Um, this is something we'd have to contract out.
So.
Not that.
So, yeah, I've actually been in touch with a contractor. It's actually the Eastern Ohio Excavating, who's been doing, uh, over here Prairie Creek, and they've done some of our work for City Mount Smith, but to have them give me a quote on it, 'cause this is just purely my. But to have them give me a quote on it, cuz this is just purely my estimate and seeing if their availability like. Is it available to do yet this year or is it something that they're already booked? Cuz it's an asphalt street, so I would want an asphalt patch to go back in.
Which request Mike, sorry.
As well, a couple of things I have, so obviously I'm concerned or have interest in the terms that are gonna be set forth. With the city, cuz I don't have a number of what the funds that we allocate back to them for the city. So I don't know what kinda timeframe we're talking about a payback, um are are we talking again, we talked about equipment, we talked about manpower. Is it something we we can assist in kind with some manpower or equipment that can alleviate some of the debt? And would this qualify for our TCP money?
This probably would, um. Next year and they think they did they get RCTP money this year, so.
Well, but again, you can get it three years in a row depending on the hardship here, you know. So it's not that, I just, obviously this has to be fixed before it's involved in.
Yeah, I don't know.
Close five to our TCP, obviously, that would be the way to go.
Yeah, asphalt's still going right now.
They usually shut down the week of Thanksgiving, so we got about like just a add a month and I don't know if they could asphalt could even still. Get it done, so and I don't know how the pipe could have been like this for years yet, I don't know, I just, they were doing some work and. Uh happened to look in and noticed it, so. I guess.
Well, I I I assume that we're gonna find out sooner than later with the grain traffic, there is a grain dealer on the south side of town there, so. I assume that that's gonna take a toll if it's gonna. I don't know, but obviously that's a little more stress.
And it would close or to do the repair would close down the road, cuz to me it doesn't make sense to do a lane at a time cuz it just increases the cost. Just tear it up, put it back in, so that would be a fairly long detour, but.
So is there something that we could supply manpower or equipment to alleviate some of the costs here too?
Um, I mean, we don't order, we'd have to order concrete pipe, which we don't have, uh it takes a little bit more. Uh I don't think we are tasked for installing concrete pipe.
No.
So I'd probably just have a contract, cuz he had four concrete collars around it too and backfill, I just. I guess I would prefer and our guys probably have with reclaim, they've been. We have our own needs, so I'd probably just have this go to a contractor.
Where's this at on ferry?
Just by the.
Uh pass the dump sign.
Right by the post office. I think it's post office, it's right there, it's the city hall or both. Just north of where Terry Cycle is a few.
Okay, got it, yeah.
So yeah, the pipe could have been like that for years too, I don't know, they just brought it up and I mean, it is collapsing, there's no way around it, that is what it is, but. He hasn't something.
So it'd be interesting, maybe even touch base with Shandra and and uh. What our TCP wants and if there's any advancement or anything like that can, that would alleviate some of their um costs. Or a lot, most of it.
That would do most of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a, so I'm hearing we'd like more information before you take action on it?
Um, I I I I'm in favor of assisting, but I'm also in favor of looking at options as far as.
I guess the main thing is is. If we feel like it's needed this year, cuz we're running short, I mean, we only have a month till asphalt's done, I mean, you could put a concrete patch in, I guess, but. Uh with the rest of it being asphalt, I think it makes sense for the patch to go into asphalt, that way allows them for future milling and over milling and filling.
Well, the worst case scenario Jayden is too, I mean, you could honestly put gravel over it till next.
Till spring too, right?
I go ahead.
If they had to.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen that down in other, any Bellevue, you know, they.
Oh, we'll sign that there says boom.
Yeah, well, yeah, so.
I mean, do they have ways to visualize it, to put a ti- uh a camera down in there to see, cuz if you got roots growing and all that kinda stuff, it kinda signifies. Maybe they'll like the time it's been there to the point where maybe it's good, the ground freezes and it's good till spring and we we look at doing something in the spring.
I know they're working on televising their sanitary sewer system with this being under the street, but there's probably no, I mean, there's no roots cuz there are no trees there at all. Being directly near the street, but.
This sounds like something you can bend down, look in the hole and see it, right?
Well, we lift up the grate on, yeah, if you lift up the grate on either side of the road for the inlet and get down in there and look, you could see it.
Yeah. So I'm I I guess I would be in favor of assisting. Um, you know, but we have to look to either at options for a payback or if they can get funded to.
So yeah, be.
So you tell me how we should proceed.
Well, I guess. If we assist, I guess my thought would be to just get it done this year, because otherwise if we wait till next year, they might as well apply for RCTP, I guess, and do it that way. Um.
Now, what's mine, what's the problem with that?
Yeah, somehow I feel that's almost the way to go.
Then that that's fine, uh I didn't wanna, I couldn't tell them, oh, yeah, we'll do that for you, you know, without talking to you three first, cuz. I just, without knowing how long it's been there, that's the real question, I guess.
I guess the the point is, right now, it's not an emergency situation, so.
Not yet, no.
Oh.
I guess it is once the street caves in, but I guess, well, I it'll be known at that point.
Well, then your costs are probably gonna go up because then you're pulling up contractors to do an emergency project.
Okay, let's do this, let's if this is advisable. Let's give it a week here and you check in with what kinda funds they received with the RTCP in the last two, three years, how much eligible, maybe talk to Shonda. What kinda options we may have to um expedite that somehow, maybe. I I just think that if that's a possibility for them, that sounds like a good idea.
I don't know that Jayden should be the one talking to Shonda, I think we should maybe refer to them to.
Yeah, but you have communication with him on these scoring projects anyway, I mean, we have, we have records of this of who received the money at that.
I mean, there's probably a way to fast track it, if they, Shonda, I could imagine would just tell them if they wanna, they can apply for it for next fiscal year and just get it done. It'll be next summer when it gets done, I don't think there's any way to fast track it through the RCTP program.
I mean, basically, it's coming from us now anyway, cuz now I get reimbursed from it.
Yeah, I'd have to go back to those emails, see how that. The reimbursement should get come back to the county, right?
It did prior to two years ago, correct, I mean, I think it changed, I think changed there a couple of years ago. And I'm not so sure the last conversation we had that that might.
Yeah, there was.
Come back in the play again that we do get reimbursed.
If we wanna wait, I mean.
Well, I don't think it hurts us the way a week, maybe we can find out more information.
I can do that.
So that was quite a few questions.
Yeah, I guess, well, if it's not going through that and we are funding it, what are we looking at for our payback, are we looking at? One year payback, we'll float it for the year and you gotta pay us by the end of next year when you get your. Your money, or are we looking at half this year, half next year?
It'd probably take two, at least two year, take more than a year, it'd take at least two years to get reimbursed, cuz.
What what money would this come out of if we floated it, so to speak?
We come out of.
Carryover.
No, I'm talking about out of your money, cuz it would have come out of secondary road.
Yeah.
What account is it coming out of that you would then hope over two years get paid back? And what would that push back?
We pay for it out of one of our line items like concrete repair or asphalt repair, and then we would just keep. Withhold their FM money, cuz so through how their FM extension money works is the state gives it to us and then we distribute to the cities that.
I get that, but I'm asking, where would you come up with the funds to do this project?
Carryover. Uh out of our carryover.
Okay.
So what is their FM money?
I don't Stacy, I'd have to ask Stacy, I don't know.
And again, it'd be tough to keep all of that, I would think, cuz they probably got others items that they need to address.
What they're supposed to use the FM money for is for that extension, like, you know.
Yeah.
City Greenbrook's got.
No doubt.
FM, that's what they're supposed to use it for, uh I guess I don't know if that's always the case, but that's what their the funds are meant for.
Yeah.
Just as a point of clarification, so the twenty twenty five RCTP program. Um Bellevue, Lamont, Miles and Preston all applied. Miles applied for a, oops. Miles applied for a street hedge and seal coat, they requested twenty three thousand five hundred and twenty four dollars and forty eight cents. They had a local match of five thousand eight hundred and eighty one dollars and twelve cents for a total of twenty nine thousand four hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. And they were not awarded anything. So this is for the twenty five RCTP, it went to Preston, Lamont and Bellevue, Miles was awarded nothing.
Okay. So yeah, I guess they were awarded, so that would help them score.
Well, that would explore better, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a chance it's been like this for a year, I guess, it's time maybe isn't of the essence.
To me, it would be smart of them if we. If they can get awarded this to.
Yeah.
Do it that way.
That's the first thing I thought of when I seen it, I thought, well, yeah, they didn't know it, so they wouldn't apply for it, but if it qualifies, you know, I would say.
And that's fine, and I guess if we, if it were to, knock on wood, hopefully it wouldn't happen, but if it were to collapse in the interim time. Uh I guess we just deal with it accordingly.
I guess we're not gonna worry about that till it collapses off.
But if it's, that that's. If it does, I guarantee, uh even though it would be our problem, our office will hear about, cuz it's, there's a, I mean, there is a lot of traffic that uses that.
Yeah.
More than highway sixty four going east out of Miles, um so it would. That's what really concerns me, I guess, is really the tr- the amount of traffic that is, even though it's not our county problem, it's just, it will ultimately probably.
I mean, you.
Come back or we'll hear about it.
Yeah.
But I guess we can wait or do the art.
I guess we could hear about it, but again, we're looking for a solution, it's not our maybe, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Um but it is, and we wanna be good neighbors like we've tried to be, but again, uh we may we have to look at solutions.
I don't wanna, I wanna be a good neighbor and all that kinda stuff, but there's a lot of questions, a lot of different avenues we can pursue. To me, uh I think if someone was just found, I wish there was more investigation to see, is that good dirt, is it clean dirt? Has it been washed away, is there a lot of erosion, we've got a lot of water this last year. You know, did that cause the collapse or is it just been packed in there for a long time, because all of that determines how fast or how much of an emergency this project is. If it's been there a long time, then we're not under a huge time crunch and we can look at the different things that come up with the best solution. You know, just to say, I I don't really feel comfortable, plural being kind of like a blank slate.
Mm-hmm.
To hope terms come back in our favor, you know, that that's not how it should work, it should be, this is the avenue we need to proceed, this is why. And and we go from there, so I think there's too many questions to make a decision today, but hopefully within a week, we can uh shore those up and. Come up with a more specific game plan.
I I just think again, in an emergency situation, we will, we will make a plan, we can survive, you know, I mean, it's not like. We can't do it, be done. I mean, I'm pretty much contractors and they're sure we can assist in an emergency situation that we can get at that.
Okay.
Let us know.
I can do that.
Anything else, any update?
Hmm, no, uh our day laborers have started, so. Uh those finally underway, but other than that, nope.
So the reclaim is completed, correct?
Yes.
I see their operators are out working. Um there is, you know, I have, we did, been a lot of washboards in the last month, especially, you know, hills and. Topstine, so I appreciate them guys out there cutting them out.
Brush clearing and stuff like that, or?
Uh so our excavator's currently getting, or hose was ripped off, so we're currently getting that repaired. Um and then once that's repaired, then yes, it'll be out brush cutting.
Okay. All right, and no other questions for Jayden, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we got Lisa from the auditor's office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty first, twenty twenty five board proceedings. As written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in official newspapers.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Got a motion by insect by Mike to approve the minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and also authorized publication in the official newspapers. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Last week, um I did submit the resignation of Arlene Schoff as the Jackson County reporter and I haven't had any discussion with. Um you as a board as far as what your um intention is as far as that replacement. There are several things in Iowa law that we need to do, um. I assume you have to make a decision if you want to appoint or if you want a special election, I do have a notice. Um to put in the paper, that is by Iowa law, um we have to put it in the newspaper saying when you're going to appoint and then the citizens of Jackson County. Have the right to petition if they so would like to, um. I got an email from John Keys, I did discuss with him this morning. Um if it is the desire of the board and I'm not, you know, trying to, but if the the board may fill the vacancy by appointment. But must publish notice in advance at least once, not less than four, no more than twenty days from the hearing to appoint. So it depends on, and that and that meaning that they can appoint, excuse me, the re- the replacement, so to me. That's the question is, when do you want to appoint?
Well, right now, the decision we have, as far as I understand it, we could either choose to do a special election or appoint.
That's correct.
But the special election, the recorder is up this next term.
In the twenty sixth.
The twenty sixth election, so it wouldn't make sense to have an election before an election, so to me, it makes sense for me. Appointing, so we would need to make a a motion in a second and decide on to appoint, and then from there it goes into the paper, um.
When do you, when are you going to appoint?
ASAP.
We can make the determination, it can start if we.
Question before that though, so obviously we have the option to appoint. And then if we do that, somebody can still petition to have.
Yes, they have a timeframe.
They have that timeframe, so still can do that.
That's correct.
That that appears to be the option for us to, I mean, obviously. We have a twenty five year employee that's very interested and very qualified, I would say, so if we consider appointing. Um.
Well, if we decide to appoint, the public notice goes out in the paper and it opens up for anybody to.
Anybody can apply though.
Sure, absolutely.
And then from the applicants, we can then make a determination to appoint.
The appointment though cannot be be effective though until there's a vacancy, so really the appointment.
Is January second.
Correct.
Retro or.
That January, because you you're, this person is employed until December thirty first.
Okay, so wherever that timeframe is, that would be our, if that's our intentions is to appoint, whatever the timeframe calls for. Public publishing.
Effective on January second.
Right, yes.
But we can appoint a person. As soon as he Smith applies, you can appoint in December fifteenth. Make the appointment to be effective January second.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that if it's an outside person and they need to give notice to a job.
Correct.
They can do that.
I just need to know that date so I can put that in the notice, I do have two notices that I've prepared and.
Well, it would be effective January second, it would be the the date of the start of the appointment.
I would like to appoint then at our December second, that way if somebody has to give a thirty day notice. They can do that.
Going on prior experience when we had to replace council members and we did it by appointment. We would say we are taking applications from A to B timeframe, then we would look at the applications. And if we knew who they were or whatever, we could make appointment right away, but if you don't know who they are. And you wanna ask and talk to them a little bit, just. I'd leave a little bit of time for him in there in case, you know, we call people in to talk and whatever.
Like to have our final decision made by the second, so I would like to get this ball rolling.
So here's some examples that I have not had approved by John. Um, this is something that I worked on, this. And I have a couple of questions. So. I think knowing.
We could put in a January second, twenty twenty six date with the.
That's the effective date.
Yes. Do you want December second as the appointment date?
I think so, at least. Which, so just keep in mind that this came from John, John said. Which, so just keep in mind that this came from John, John says. Um, if you do it by appointment, must publish in advance at least once. Not less than four nor more than twenty days from the hearing to appoint. So that means that there's no sense in putting it in next week's paper.
No.
We can take applications for two weeks.
What's the four and twenty for then?
The date which it needs to be published, that's for all public notices.
Yeah, but so you're looking at November.
So if it went in, if it went in the. We can get John down here to verify.
That's why I went down to talk to him this morning, this is the email that I received, because then it also, at that point, then it does. Trip the citizens having the right to petition if they want.
I didn't think they could petition until we actually made the appointment.
After we made the decision to.
After, within fourteen days of publication, they have the right to petition. The fourteen days of publication is coming, fourteen days of appointment, the electors of Jackson County have the right to petition, requiring the vacancy to be filed by special election.
Good.
So Iowa code says, notice must be published of the intention to appoint at least four, but no more than twenty days before the appointment is scheduled to occur. The notice must be published in advance if a resignation is submitted to take effect on a future date. The publication must also notify county residents of the right to request a special election by filing a petition. The publication must occur once and must be published in newspaper general circulation in the county, which we would put in all three newspapers.
We need to have a couple of weeks before the appointment date from when, so if we put it in the newspaper, I think the earliest we could do it.
Is the thirteenth of December.
Nineteenth.
November thirteenth, right? Or twelfth?
Nineteenth and twentieth.
Twenty days would be the thirteenth.
Yeah.
If we did the second.
I mean, it could go in, I mean, technically between four and twenty days, it could go up. I would say if we can get in the paper, the twelfth and thirteenth and set it.
I think that's too far out.
Too early, the earliest we can publish is November fifteenth.
Nineteenth, yeah. Twenty days.
I, I don't understand that, uh, I was at the early.
The papers aren't published on that date, the fifteenth, on the thirteenth.
So we can't go twenty, it would be.
What I'm saying is if we wanted in the paper on the twelfth or thirteenth, they need it by the eighth, or the seventh, is that not possible?
No, but what she's saying, our twenty.
Is too far out.
Our twenty days is the thirteenth, our paper comes out on the eleventh, eleventh or twelfth, Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't know what's classified.
Get two, we get two.
So the earliest we can publish, if we have a December second appointment date, the earliest date we can publish is November fifteenth. But we won't have a paper, one on November fifteenth, the next paper would be one on the nineteenth and the twentieth.
So we would submit it for publication on the fourteenth, and it would be published in the newspapers on the nineteenth and the twentieth.
Okay.
Correct.
And is that when Bellevue's and Preston's gets published too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday, so we're gonna publish the November nineteenth and twentieth. With the intention of appointing on December second.
Okay.
And, um.
I personally like the bigger, longer public notice, um, I will get that, now that I have some dates, I will get that approved by John.
So we can get the public notice in right away.
I'm gonna publish that public notice on November nineteenth and twentieth.
Hey, you want to supprove any?
I, I can come back, because plenty of time, I can come back next week to make sure that, that that, um, gets the approval of the county in thirty days if it applies. Okay, and so I, I know action is needed it today.
Well, first of all, I think the action needed is, we need to vote on whether we're gonna make it by voice.
Correct.
So.
Make that motion that we proceed with this by an appointment versus a public.
National.
Absolutely. I would say.
Got a motion by an insect by Mike to, um. So, um, approve the, uh. Vacancy for the calendar quarter, we're gonna fill it via appointment. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and, um, the next thing for discussion is I did receive a phone call from someone at the senior center. Um, it sounds like they're starting to serve a few more meals. Um, they are wanting to know. The, the original request is, is the old gas stove that was down there, and I know that we had it capped because there was a leak. And it sounds like when Seig Valley, then NEI three A, they hadn't looked at, and they said that it was too cost. Prohibitive, it wasn't effective to go and, and have it fixed or whatever, so the question is. Do we want as a county, and I haven't talked to Jeff, I didn't have time to talk to Jeff, do we want this? The stove to be looked at down there, or do we want it removed? Do we wanna go purchase, um, a small, just a residential stove oven for down there? What's the wishes of the board?
Does the current stove belong to NEI three A or?
No, everything there is. Just some FYI of things that I found out, um. Appliance Solutions says you're going to pay dearly to have somebody come in and look at a commercial. Oven stove.
To repair you.
To repair, if it can even be repaired.
Right.
And finding somebody to do that might be even a little bit tricky. Um, you know, I asked them and they're like, uh, you know. They will, will not do it, because that's, that's not in their area, I did price just. Kind of a generic base model. A gas oven is right at seven hundred bucks and electric is six fifty. Or just.
My question is liability and, uh, requirements, is there, they start cooking and providing meals? Do they have to be certified by kitchen? Do they need certain training?
They have, they have sent three people to the serve safe training. That was held, and all three of them, I believe, got, and I know that two of them did, the one was taking the test the last I heard, I'm assuming. They got their certificate, so basically that's what they need there.
I don't know if they need the food license, that I don't know, I, I don't know what they have with anything, I did not ask that, they just asked about.
I just know to, to sell stuff at the farmer's market, because they are charging for these meals and things like that, they have to have certain. Vendor lot, you know, there's, you know, an insurance, if they got people back there cooking, do they have insurance for that, or does that fall on us, or? Those are my questions. It's great that they're having more food and things like that, but I think they would need to make sure they have coverage for whatever exposure they might have.
I was just asked about the stove, I can't answer those questions, you don't know. So the first question is, is, do we have the commercial stove that is there now taken out, dismantled and taken out?
Yeah, I, I guess I would like Jeff's opinion on this, also, he's been around the business long enough to know that, yeah, that thing's probably a liability and. Needs to be out of here, and what would his, his best information to be, say, hey, just get a, what their. Quantity of meals or is a, is a seven hundred dollar stove gonna do it, I mean. Can you do it with crock pots and air fires and whatnot?
Say, does the hood still work?
From the way it sounds right now, they're doing, just from the last, they're doing like. Ten to fifteen meals a day, and that's kind of what they're doing, they're being prepared. Elsewhere and brought in, but if they come up with over that many meals, then they're having to. Run back. Wherever they're, wherever they're doing this, and get more meals and bring them back down. Type of thing, so they were wanting something where they could just.
I guess I would like the recommendation from Jeff to say, yeah, this makes sense, if we just don't in there, be done.
Yeah, because again, you got the.
This is the time. It's sensitive.
Yes and no, I mean.
Inconvenient, yeah.
It's, and it's inconvenient for them, and they are one, increasing their meals, so we don't wanna see it go backwards.
And like Don said, on the other hand, do we need that space with Jennifer to say, this is what we're planning on doing?
Or do they need to touch base, and we gotta look at, it does, they got a stove, then you need the hood, does the hood work, and, and just a few questions like that, because. You know, there's a reason we didn't put a stove in the jail, is because, um, we don't wanna. We didn't want that extra expense, so I'm assuming it has one down there, does it work, has it been worked, operated in how long, I mean.
And that's the other thing with the gas pilot light or electric and no pilot light, yeah, I don't know. There's too many questions, if I was doing it at home, I'd do it, but I.
Okay, so the first thing is, we want Jeff to evaluate the, the commercial stove that is currently there.
Right.
Okay, do you wish to spend any money on it at, at all?
No.
Oh, okay, so really with.
If it didn't work right when they shut it off and it sat for years, it's not gonna more accurately work.
So at this point, what you're saying is, it's okay to have it removed.
Yes.
I, I would say yes, under his recommendation, yes.
Okay, all right, so then let's just get one thing done, done at a time, and then we'll look at.
And I guess when he's looking at that or doing that, yeah, what. You know, is a gas stove okay going back in there, there's obviously gas line there, can it be converted down to a commercial?
I.
Line.
Here's what I'm envisioning, I'm envisioning, and I don't know. I'm envisioning a large commercial stove, and now we're gonna put one this size in here, so we gotta void the bill too. So is it something we need to retro?
Well, and that's, when I'm talking to. The lady who owns the appliance store, her comment was, they've done this in the past in different areas. Um, and. Some people just leave the void there, you know, it's kind of no different than, you know, the kitchen space down at TWB, you got this. Little space under the hood and a big open area where you can add later if need be.
Let's see the recommendations.
Some do.
Would you like someone from the board to come here and discuss this with you?
Some do two appliances, two stoves side by side in there.
They can probably answer those questions that I can't.
Well, I would say right now, let's see what Jeff. Jeff, get, look at the stove, take it out of there, look at the hood, make sure it works, and then from there, we could look at, um. Putting the stove in if that's what they want, and making sure all the boxes are checked, insurance, liability, all that stuff, and then we go from there.
I would say you need to touch base with insurance and say, this is what our intentions are.
I would hope that the senior center would have to jump through that hoop as far as.
Yeah.
So, um, I do have one other thing that I was gonna discuss with you today, but in the interest of time, I will wait. So for today, that's all that I have for the.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Lain? Or actually. Laney, you wanna?
I think Jack was planning on coming, um, I've not too.
We got a work session coming up here real quick second.
Back to you, I, I haven't heard from him today, but that's not, that he's not here yet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, um, yeah, just was gonna meet with you guys today just to touch base on, um. Our region meeting, we had, uh, one last, last Monday. And, um, good news is, is that, um, we did, with all the cuts that we made. Uh, we did save enough money to be able to pay off all the MHI bills, and we'll still have, um. Some money left that we will have to pay back to the state. Um, don't know what that exact dollar amount is, they do have a draft budget, but it still has to go through the audit and everything. Um, so that's a good thing that we were able to get those bills paid off. Um, and then, I think with the. New system, it sounds like we've got a lot of people that are still kind of calling their region old number. So, um, the state said that they're gonna be working on some marketing to make sure the information is out there for the ASO and the DAP. To make sure people are using that nine eight eight number for mental health crisis emergencies, so there just needs to be more marketing with that. Um, and then. I did get a call from Jody from the DAP just yesterday, and they did finally get somebody hired who's gonna be covering the Jackson Dubuque area. So, um, they're gonna start having some office hours here a couple times a month. Um, and they said that, you know, they're always available by phone or, um, can come any extra days if need be. If they find that there is a need for that, but they are finally got somebody on board for that, so that's the good news. Um. But yeah, uh, we're gonna be meeting again to hopefully wrap everything up on December fifteenth at three P M for the region. Uh, and that should be the last meeting and should have the final numbers and be able to, um, wrap everything up for that.
So I didn't hear you say good news, and I didn't hear you say any bad news, so that's.
Yes. You don't want bad news.
Any questions for Laney?
I appreciate you working through that, and I, I know it's. Time consuming and you never know.
Right, yeah, and it has been, but it's all coming together, um.
Well, good.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Lain, you're up, want over our executive assistant.
Morning.
Good morning. This will not take long, we just have the calendar to look at.
Good.
Um, we have this work session at ten o'clock, we have another one at ten thirty today. At five o'clock tonight is the McCoqueta River. Um.
Water management.
Water Shand management authority, there are annual meeting in Montesalo, and that's o- open to all of you if you'd like to go to that. Um, tomorrow, Wednesday, October ninth, from eight thirty to ten thirty, is the professional developers of Iowa legislative roundtable. This is, there are two of them that do the same thing, this is the one in Duwitt. Um, there's also one, um, on November fifth. And I think is in. Montesalo, correct. So, that's why we had some conflicts, that's why we talked about the earth, moving your tea meeting and things like that. So this is an alternative to the November fifth meeting. Uh, Sunday morning at two A M sharp, we follow our clocks. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November fourth at nine A M. And of course, will be election day, so I'm keeping that one as short as we can manage, because auditor's office will be a little busy that day.
All right, any questions for Lain? Thank you very much. Anybody got anything for the board?
I do not.
No, I had a couple meetings, but nothing. Backs and came out of them, so.
But there's nothing to the board.
Further business, I'd make a motion adjourned.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Got a motion by Mike, take my name to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, just a reminder, everybody, drive safe, there's a lot of farmers on the road, and the deer are starting to move, so we're clearing the brush back, but they're still out there, so drive safe. Have a great day.